Welcome everybody to tonight's meeting of the Community Environmental Services Committee. I'd like to welcome John to his first council meeting, not voting tonight, but by the time you come to the next meeting, you will be. Congratulations and welcome. We'll start with the apologies for absence, I think. Carolyn, any apologies?
Apologies for your seat from White and Burton.
Thank you. 14325 is declarations of any disclosable community interests. Anybody got anything to declare? All right, then on to the minutes of the last meeting held on the 3rd of June. Any changes anybody wants to make to the minutes, must raise. All agree to the minutes then? I'll sign those, Karl. Thank you. Okay, on to 14525. Majority of the work of this committee is done by our brilliant town team. Have you got any points you'd like to draw attention to from the excellent report you've provided?
Just to say that obviously the team have been sort of busy battling through the massive workload that we have and the tasks. So one of the things where we might have gone very closely again is the partnership working, especially with our common and the grazing. We've also been working on the floral displays, Fethford in Bloom, continuing to make sure they're kept looking presentable and tidy. We've also been working in partnership with the Riverside, we've seen a massive enhancement just recently take place in the Riverside area of new benches and planters. The markets continue to grow. Again, we're getting more and more interest and we are now submitted three grants, the marketplace. If successful, this will see new lighting, new power and further enhancements with planters and benches. So there's a lot of work still taking place at the moment in readiness and we hope that we are supported through those grants to further improve that particular area of the town. Again, we've sort of been working very much on the sort of action points from the committee. So we've been installing the water bus for harvesting. We've now got the permissions to do the one on the marketplace, which will take all the water from the Shandys building and I'll host all that. So, you know, we're really sort of pushing along. One of the other areas we've been working on is the cemetery, getting all the trees ready for the memorial trees to be sold out. Again, that was another action point that was raised by the committee. And working along with volunteer groups, you know, again, continuing to promote effect for town council for all the stuff that we do and enhancing the town and all the best things that we can do for our residents and visitors.
Yes, thank you very much. Any comments or questions, Funnig?
I did read through it, there's an awful lot and it is as usual really good. There was a couple of things that I was going to ask question on. One was a delegated authority for the dog thing. So is that something we're close to getting?
We are, we're working, we're progressing very much now with Breckland. It's just now with their legal teams to get the legal, the legalities behind it, how we're going to do it. But yes, they're very much in support of the issues that we've experienced on the common with the dog attacks. And they're in full support of supporting us as much as they can. So they are now working with the dog warden. He will now be hopefully instructed in the next few weeks to start going on and to engage. So it'll be a bit of education and it'll also be targeting those, you know, repeat of defending. There will be a fine in place from the bylaws, it's a £50 fine on the spot. So, you know, we are progressing very much more than we ever have been with Breckland enforcement.
Yeah, it's a good news. Difficult job, I think that's going to be, but good news. So I looked at the enhancement of marketplace and lower, I guess that's what you just mentioned, which was the lighting and so I'm happy with that, that's really good. There was mention of the travellers in there. I do wonder as a body whether we just put up with every year having to suck up the cost of, you know, what happens with travellers. And the reason I mention that, it is annual, you know, they do move from one place to another, I think they cleared off to Newmarket not long after. But we've got some large open spaces, which if we decided to put some protection in to stop people being out of drive along over a period of many years, we could affect a really substantial change. I know that comes with cost, but we're already paying to keep them off and getting off. So it's just the thought of, you know, whether we go down that road at some point.
Yeah, absolutely. There's a lot of investigations at the moment taking place, again with Historic England, Natural England, again working with Breckland to see what can and can't be done on those areas. We've just had one quote come in and we should hopefully have another two follow along. So it'll be a set out proposal to the committee at a later day to look at.
Okay, brilliant. And my very last one is memorial trees. Great that we've got 20 on the go, really good. Have we got any plans to have one as a template to say these are ready for this? Yeah, great. Yeah, you're way ahead of me as these.
Yeah, go off it. Hence, councillor Harvey and then councillor Peters and councillor Anne.
Thank you for that.
You're done?
You don't mind, I'll start a call from the resident, let's stop the people getting on the belt of calm, yeah.
I'll leave that. Very good. Councillor Peters?
Yeah, basically, one of the things with the travellers, which I've noticed is, doesn't matter what you do. What barriers, if they remove the barriers, if it's locks, they cut the locks. If it's physical barriers, they need the barriers and they just say, oh, there wasn't here. But it is really difficult and I think even if we was to secure every area, there's still going to be an element that they just break the locks and it will be that cost anyway. So I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, but what I'm saying is we have to weigh off, if we're going to do it, it's got to be bought time.
Councillor Anne?
Thank you. Firstly, thanks so much for the work you do, as ever. I had cause to call on you not once but twice, I'm saying, we've got a really good response on both occasions, one for the plant would be a tip to the head and the other for the block. So thank you for that. I've already emailed you about this, but I think I should bring it before the committee. I was really quite upset by the, some of the comments about our brilliant graziers on social media. Saying they weren't looking after the sheep, that they couldn't keep them properly, blah, blah, blah. I'm fully supportive and I hope everybody else is, and I want to make that point as strongly as I can here. They've done a brilliant job for us, maintaining the biodiversity, increasing it and sending us an awful lot of money. So Lord may look at it. And what's the other thing? I can't remember. I don't know. That'll do for that.
Very good. I wondered about Ramsey Close, so we've been talking about that for a while now.
So we've had confirmation now with Ramsey Close, that we've got all the approvals now with the planning. We've now been working with the contractor and he's set to go in in October and start to do the front fencing renewal, which will then bring that space open again for the public and the community there to use.
Okay, very good. And can you remind me what purpose that's going to be put to?
So there's a covenant on the area. Unfortunately, we're very restricted in what we can do with the site. It's registered as a play area. So whether the committee will sort of look at maybe sort of installing some play equipment at a later day. Potentially maybe some funding options available, obviously able to assist the residents and community. So that's something we can look at once the site is ready to be opened again.
Just on that note, I think from a resident's perspective, when we pushed that out, that they're as keen to see that something's being done, not necessarily the end solution. So if it's tidied up and it looks like it's being maintained, that's a start on the journey rather than seeking, you know, what the end result is from other part. So good start.
Would you like to say something, John?
The only reason I say because of the, I'm more on the allotment committee and that was a site which was palated. And all of that particular time, we were advised that we just had to figure out a pen and that would be allotment site rather than anything else. But obviously, time was well done and we asked, where is the other part?
I can respond to that. Actually, there were two sets of covenants put in us. The land was initially brought to Breckland and when they transferred the land to us, they put a covenant on the pay area and said that we could change it to community use, which would include anything else. And then when they, we then paid for that process to happen, they probably advised us that said that the covenant that they had given to us wasn't the complete covenant. The original covenant that they took the land on said it only could be a paper, not nothing else. So we had to leave that in suspense because we couldn't do anything other than be a paper. So two covenants contradict each other, the original one takes precedent.
There's a whole load of other stuff that Alan could tell you about.
Very good. We've kind of skipped over the burial administrators' report. Anything anybody wants to raise there in addition to the memorial trees?
Only that. I'll go back to my original point about the memorial trees. They will provide us some money eventually to start looking at overground plots which won't affect the water table. So we've got to have that in mind so that we can still provide a service for the town and not think that the trees are the end of the story.
Okay, good. Then we're on to 14625, which is the action points.
Let the report.
Oh.
Committee happy that you let the report.
Is the committee happy that we know to report from the town, excellent report from the town team, yes? Thank you. Action points from previous meetings. Alan, you're going to take us through these?
I am. I'm very embarrassed. I'm not the committee clerk for this, I'm just standing here for the town clerk. So my committees, I normally start with a very red face because we haven't done anything. Of this committee, they seem to get through a hell of a lot of work, so maybe the clues and who's the committee clerk. What's very interesting is if you have a look, we're not creating a backlog, I think everything that came in June 2025 is complete or nearly complete. And you can see on this thing here. So that's really, I think Nick and the town clerk and everyone else needs to be congratulated for pursuing those. There's some earlier outstanding ones that go back to when I was the committee clerk here, they are in progress. It's just we rely on so many third parties. When we can do it ourselves, we get it done. But when we rely on third parties, this can be very frustrating. So there is a lot more progress than there has been certainly earlier in the year.
Okay, good. Thanks. Any questions or comments on these action points?
I had one question on the last points on there, which was the road naming. There are three on there. Are they the same one? Or are they three different requests? I don't remember. Another two?
I think it's one.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I think I could chat about with you later. I think it's one.
Good. On the first one, I think the groundwater monitoring thing, I remember we talked about this some time ago and we were hoping to reduce the frequency of the testing. Are we still trying to work out?
Absolutely, yes. We're still working with the EA at the moment. Contact has been made, we're just waiting now for updates from the EA, they're happy for us to proceed. Yeah, absolutely.
And in the meantime, we've had to submit reports as usual.
But again, there's no real fluctuation in the nutrient levels. So yeah, it's staying stable, which is good.
Bring John up to speed, why we have to take the monitor in the cemetery.
Are you volunteering too?
No, it's your job, isn't it?
Okay, all right. Thanks.
We had a cemetery extension and it was subject to a limited number of burials. And the EA put a requirement on us to do groundwater monitoring. At some stage, they came, we were doing it half yearly and at one stage, they then came back to us and said in terms of our planning permission, that we had to do it quarterly. We've been doing it quarterly ever since and the question is, because there's been no change, do we go back to doing it half yearly, et cetera? But to work out that, because this goes back to 2017, 16, people have moved on. So all the contact details that we have, we start again, essentially.
Yes, because there is allotments, there's lots of fossil beds.
Just underneath the new cemetery extension, there's an artesian well and water is extracted from that well. And so the EA was conscious of what's being, you know, put down into the ground with nitro stuff. So we have to just monitor at the moment, the restrictions.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Great. So noting that, thank you, not even noting it, just moving straight on. 14725 is allotment fees, review of allotment fees and site deposits.
Okay. In terms of this, our requirement is that we have to give it a year's notice to allotment holders to increase the fees. And it's just one of these things that just falls off the radar. So what we've done now is we are proposing increased allotment fees, not for this year, because the allotment year starts on the 11th of October 2025, we actually do it for 11th of October 2026. And what we're trying to do is actually put a clause in to say that should this committee not consider it, the fees will go up by five percent rather than to the nearest 50p going forward. So we have put the proposed fees for 2026, 27, we have to send a note, our renewal notices will go out in the next two weeks. We have to tell all the allotment holders that the fee will be increasing in 26, 27, this will be the fee rate. And then every year, the new allotment holder starts, we will give them a pack of documents that will tell them that every year the allotment fees will go up by five percent rather than to the nearest 50. And that will ensure that every year we recover our costs. The basis for doing it is that we have two costs, our labour costs obviously go up, they go up every single year and water has been the big issue. We provide water free of charge. Any lot site that's not metered is ignored away. That runs off the cemetery, so we're not too sure how much water gets consumed there, but there are mine plots and a lot of people water from their own gardens. But water has become quite a significant cost to us. At Manford Road, we've gone from, you know, a lot of full plots to half plots. That means that there's more people, there's more activity and I think generally that's been our big cost rider. But the other thing that, the second part of the decision in looking at allotment fees is that in June 2006, someone in this council decided it would be a good idea to register to opt out of allotment fees as being vat-free and to opt them in to charging vat. So we lose 20% of our allotment income to HMRC because the fees that you see there are vat-inclusive. So 20% of that goes back to HMRC. So one of the decisions we're coming, I'm asking the committee to do is if we can opt back, opt out of vatable in June 2026. If you opt in, you have to be there for a minimum of 20 years. So our opt-out period will be June 26. So if this committee approves that, the letter's really drafted, got a sticker on it, all of these is a stand and then we'll ask HMRC to do that. Why would you opt in? It's where you have these big developments, you assume that you're going to have major developments. You came back with that and then you charged that. Whoever did it, I'm not too sure what big developments have happened because certainly nothing's happened at Manford Road and I would imagine in the last 20 years and some of the other, London Road, et cetera, there hasn't been major development. So the second decision, what we'll be asking for relates to the vat issue, that'll be for this committee to look at. The third issue is deposits have been the bane of our lives because the state of our plots hasn't always been that great. So we've been asking allotment holders to pay a £50 deposit. Not all deposit allotment holders have paid a deposit because that's relatively new requirements. So there are allotment holders that don't pay any deposits. The cost of clearing an allotment has just gone astronomical, you know. A few years ago when I joined the council, we used to pay about £200 and something to have a skip emptied. We now pay between £400 and £600 to have a skip empty. So costs have really gone up through the roof. So what we've done is we've had a look at what other councils do. Some of them, King's Lynn, Ipswich and Wunden don't levy deposits at all. I'm not sure how they recover their costs. Mowden Hall charges a deposit of £30, while Swaffham charges £40. The Swaffham charges have a provisor that they will recover excess clearing costs from the vacating allotment holder. How they do that, I'm not too sure, you know, we claim the same. So in terms of deposits, we have to be very careful because if we increase the deposits too high, we could actually put allotment holder, make it unaffordable for allotment holders. Because you have to pay a year's fee in advance because we have a constant date and then to pay a higher allotment. So at the moment, a half plot of allotment holder will pay about £96, but the new fee they'll pay just over £100. And if we continuously increase that, we won't have anyone taking about allotments. And then we have costs because we have to keep, stream it, we have to keep it in a good condition, et cetera. But there's a kind of multi-pronged approach. The first one is increase the allotment fees by £10. The second thing is we've got to get our notice to quit going. I think we've done very well, we've started doing enforcement. But if we've got somebody who's got a lot of boarding, a lot of non-cultivation and a lot of materials on, it would be better for us to get them to move on now because if we wait two or three years, environmental regulations around disposing of waste get stricter and stricter and clearing waste gets more extensive. And the third thing that we've never done, we've certained it in our rules and regulations, is to recover the excess costs from an allotment holder. And I would, I'm asking the committee if we can go and get a legal opinion, just how do we actually do that? Because if we use the county court judgment system, it's, I think it costs us £80 to solve judgment processes. But we've got to do a lot of things before that, which might not be an administrative burden. It's just a matter of sending an invoice, quoting our rules and regulations, looking at the agreements that we've signed. So we're just looking to pursue that, get a legal opinion, which I don't think will cost too much money and then we at least have a solid basis to go forward. So we recover our money through, you know, if someone has left their allotment in a significantly bad state, you know, instead of us spending £400, £500, £600 on a skip, that we actually take corrective action and try and recover some of that cost. Because we continuously give them, keep, you know, we've been going around and continuously telling them too much materials on your allotment plot, would you clear that? So the recommendation is simple, that the fees proposed for 2026 be approved, we increase, annually increase our lot fees by 50%, sorry, rather than to the nearest 50p. We opt out of that for all our lot sites from June 26. The lot deposit's been increased to £60 for full and half sites and then we obtain a legal opinion to see where we stand in terms of recovering excess costs where allotment holders left the significant amount of materials.
Thank you, Alan. Thanks for the report, really helpful, good to see what other councils are doing. I think, shall we take this, the five decisions we've been asked to make in order then? So starting with the fees proposed. Anybody have any views on that or should we just take a vote on it? Councillor Anne?
I think, I mean, they will be upset about it, obviously. But I still think that a little over a pound a week is really a good deal, I believe we do. That costs, we are the champs and we've got those folks. So I think that is very reasonable.
Will the concessions still fly?
They are, they're in the table.
Okay.
I think, and this goes to all of these points now, we're only trying to help the good allotment holders, you know, maintain a good service for them. So I think as long as we're engaging with them and explaining why we're doing it, you know, it doesn't really matter how business is done in here, as long as they understand what we're doing. Because that's where it would go wrong, not any of the points up there as far as I can see. So I would be in agreeance.
Just got one question around the VAT. If we then opt out of VAT, so obviously the lot, what are all of us? Up and down the VAT, is that right?
They don't know, which they have taken example, Berry Road was never opted in. So they, those allotment holders get exactly the same invoice, there's no vat disposed on the actual invoice. So they're unaware of it, we're unaware of it.
They're saving for us to cover it, things like skips, which are very expensive.
It'll give us abusive income, we will use some of the inputs on the posts, you know, some of the costs that we incur. So if someone files a chief example, we'd use the vat input on that. At the moment, we're paying out 20%, I couldn't imagine that we claiming back probably 5%. So there could be a net saving of about 15%. It just depends on what we use.
Am I right in thinking we don't actually make much money on the allotment, if any, it's all we lose?
We lose money on it, yeah.
And that will sort of just mean the lots are less rather than.
Yeah, that gives significant difference.
Councillor Harvey?
I would like, as I said before, to have a formal allotment holders when this is done. So we can explain to them the reasons why we do it. I'm also bought because I mean, you know, it's good stepping forward.
I've seen, I work on allotment every day, I've seen the work that Karl does up there, clearly it's boss. And I had a word with him yesterday and there's one plot which actually isn't, he's got an accumulation box. And if nothing is cleared on that plot by the owner or the renter, he's got one hell of a lot of work there. And so claiming, I mean, I would imagine he would have been one of the original ones up there who would not pay any bother either. And it is a massive amount of work.
Just one, sorry.
Yeah, just to sort of sweat about that really. And we've seen costings of thousands of pounds on me to clear plots.
I mean, there's one on the very road, oh sorry, one on London, the bottom corner, it's going to cost hundreds and hundreds to clear. It was more timber than plants. Councillor Peters?
It's just really about the deposit, I mean, I don't think it's unreasonable that if someone has paid the deposit and they leave their plot in a bad state, we actually go, you know, the deposit doesn't, don't know we're near covering it, so you don't have to deposit that. And I think that's what we would do with a flat, that's what we would do with a building. And I don't see that that's any difference. You shouldn't be saying, well, get the deposit back because you left the plot in a state. And I do think that if it's cost effective to get it back on, like the cost tag on a route, you know, that might be the way to go, but we have to inform the people before they sign. So it's not, I don't think it's fair to go, we're changing returns and conditions for the ones that are there. But anyone that now takes a plot should be saying, if you leave it in this state, it is possible that we will recover any cost to clear the plot at the end. I don't think that's unreasonable.
Councillor McDonald?
I kind of disagree a little bit in as much as if somebody comes in into an area and then we say, look, you know, things are going to change this year, that the cost's going to go up or, you know, there are new regulations because it's costing us so much money. I think it's reasonable to say there is a change and you will be liable to what's left on there. I also think after what John yourself have said, it isn't just those who've paid the deposit, those who haven't paid the deposit, we should have some way of trying to get the money back, even if it is a little difficult. So.
What's on?
Sorry, Vic, I'm with my, hey, look, I just say what I think, you know, I'm quite evidence of it, I know you. I think John would probably say that largely the people that are costing them the money, the ones who haven't paid the deposit, it isn't you people coming in, it's some of the old ones that have hung around for a long time, hung around one term or something.
Yeah, on that point, I mean, the funds, some of the ones who took on just last year, they've been, you know, they're gone, left it another year, they've basically realised that it's too much work.
Yeah.
And to be fair to them, they've cleared their plots completely.
Yeah.
And, you know, so one would hope that they would get their deposits back because they had done what would have been an hassle. But there are other people who have got sheds and lead tubes and chicken runs and you name it. And they've just been left.
Sorry, that's a pretty weird one, though. The plots with beehives on. If they leave their plots and leave, it must be really expensive to remove the bees.
Is it, Nick?
We've always got a demand with beekeepers to come and take away swarms. So we're pretty lucky that we do have a lot of beekeepers in Fethford who would come and remove the, the biggest problem for us is chickens. If somebody vacates and leaves the chickens. remove the the biggest problem for us is chickens. If somebody vacates and leaves the chickens or.
It's foul, it was an accident.
Yeah, that's the biggest problem for us. But we're generally pretty good that we can find somebody who can rehome them. Um but they are the difficult ones.
Yeah.
John's looking like he would take some chickens.
Are you chickens for hire?
Yeah.
Unfortunately. Seven instances, yeah, sort of being, you know, sort of neglected.
Well, I've only got three, you're the last one, so.
I'm leaving behind. I'll make a note.
This is how I'm supposed to say that. On my last evening, I think we sort of need to sell this a bit, and I think that's why a meeting would be a really good idea. I think the way we sell it is that we're we're looking out for the people who look after their plots, isn't it?
Yeah. You happy with that? Okay, uh so I don't know if I'm right, but I'm getting the sense that there isn't, that we could vote on this in one block, probably, could we? We've discussed all, so all in favour.
Proposer.
A proposer, sorry. Mac, thank you.
Yeah.
Not second. Counselor Land, all in favour? Thank you very much. Done. Uh great. So now we're on to one forty eight twenty five, which is the new uh environmental and biodiversity strategy and action plan.
As you'll see, the author, Tom Clark, he's sitting in body at the moment, so I'm sort of free and rude to say and ask you contributions. So I put together the the information. Essentially, what there is is there was an old biodiversity action plan. There's been a lot of movement on that. Uh she's put together a a policy and she's put together a new action plan. Uh when we had our pre-agenda meeting, um chaired, rightly pointed out that are there budget implications? There are a few budget implications, which as part of the strategy will be to address it in the in the twenty twenty six budget. But a lot of it is actually cost savings that we would get a net reduction in costs rather than an increase in costs. Other than that, I would be speak, removing any doubt, skill and knowledge about this particular topic.
Thank you, Anna. And uh I just wanted to pay tribute to head head couns- ex-counsel Hazen or Cambridge, who did the previous policy of, okay, it's good kind of foundation which to build on. Uh so any comments and questions about this policy and action plan? Um in that case, can I ask for a proposer to for us to adopt the uh policy and action plan? Counselor Harvey and a second, uh Counselor Peters, all in favour? Yes, thank you. To agree that the action plan will be monitored annually and updated as required? Do we need a proposer or a second for this one?
Same way.
Same way, okay. And to replace the existing environmental strategy with a new one. Very good. Uh one forty nine twenty five, the updated open space policy and revised pricing. Deputy Tom Clark.
I'm in trouble again. And the open space policy that's that's before you, uh is based on not the previous open space policy, but the what forward. That's probably the reason we just haven't hadn't updated our our uh uh website. So this is one of the prom- challenges that we have. So the 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 policy that's tabled now is a is a huge improvement on the one, two versions ago. But there were some matters in the previous version, for example, the provision of toilets. We used to have situations where people would hire Malford Common uh um for a few days, not provide toilets and they're all there, you know, uh uh patrons would go up into the town and use the toilet facilities there. If we needed to keep our toilets open, there was a charge for that. And the other thing that we came up with was was a parking plan. So if there's an event on Barnham Cross Common, uh someone needs to put together a parking plan, where they're going to park, et cetera, and that's excluded. So if I could ask uh for the committee to look at the charges uh and approve the change in the charges, but if we just retable this at the next community environmental services meeting just with those matters, that either the committee can have a chance to debate whether they want to retain those matters or not. And because I've put together the wrong information, I don't think the committee's in a position to do that.
I'd like to comment on one thing. I did have a look at the the charges and we're talking about, you know, for instance, um Barnham Common playing field, three hundred pounds plus VAT for a large organisation, a commercial event. Doesn't seem very much to me. There's a lot of difference between, you know, a a group using that area and a commercial venture going to use it. So I, you know, I know there's two columns. We've got one for charity schools and volunteers, and then we've got a commercial. I think potentially there's large and small versions of commercial, because it doesn't seem a lot.
That's all, Alan.
Thank you. Um yeah, you compare that charge to the charges for users in the barn here, it's a seal, wasn't it?
Hmm. So if I just come back now, I wouldn't like to see um groups who are putting on an event, say something like the wheels thing that goes on on Barnham Common. I wouldn't like us to sort of be putting so much money in that it becomes untenable for them. But by the same token, I don't think it's fair to have a big uh commercial event that's going to raise those amount for themselves, and we're still earning sharp in the same amount, if you see what I mean.
Do we have a get to us? Sorry, do we have a, uh what is the kind of demand for these kinds of things?
I think um if I use some of the events that we've had, I mean, um um and some of the challenges we've had, it's, I think we've had a circus there once in the last two years, three years. Uh Malford Common obviously is where the the favourite site is for the fun fairs and and we've had a circus on the on Malford Common. We're actually not getting very big events happening. Uh one of the challenges we had with with the event that you were referring to is, to what extent is it charitable and what extent is it commercial? Yeah. So one of the requirements we put into the new, the the recent, the more recent open space thing was that you actually had to prove your charitable status, because I can raise money for charity, you know, but but is it structured, is it is it authentic? Or am I just, you know, yes, it's for charity, because a whole lot of people, there's a whole lot of businesses around it. There's a, you know, there's a vendor for selling hot dogs, there's a vendor selling cold drinks, beer, et cetera. Are they part of the charitable thing or are they doing it for gain? And it's just the entry that goes into the charitable. So we just wanted to put a little bit more information around that, but the fees haven't gone up significantly. I mean, I looked at it, it's just the the suggested donations that have gone up. Uh and again, it's a matter of, do you scare people off? You know, to what extent do you scare people off? They're not being used extensively at the moment, that's all I can say.
Okay, thanks. Counselor Harvey.
Uh the one major event that we have on Barnham Common is Mr Gray and the fireworks.
Yeah.
The amount of money that raised for our charity is phenomenal.
Yeah.
I mean, the cheque he brought in for this year was incredible. So I personally wouldn't like to see him.
Well, no, let's have a bit of it, you know, say, let's have a bit of it then.
It's not improving, you know. So you talk to the care report, so. I've given it to them.
I mean, that would be a fair thought. That would be a free event because it's it's done on behalf of the town, very.
Yeah, keep that free, or else.
Okay, let me check it back in with you. So we are, um you'd like us to approve the fees and charges today?
If you're happy to do it, or if you would like us to go away and have a, but, you know, the comments that have been made. The the commercial event hasn't changed, from what I can see, you know, and the, it's just the suggested donations we had arranged. We've now just put a put an absolute amount.
Have these gone up recently?
No, they haven't gone up for two years.
Time they did.
Two to three years.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, on the surface, for us, there's lot of those.
Hmm. If it's a big, if it's a big event, another fifty quid isn't going to fund anybody or whatever the.
I don't know, I'd be diverse. I'm I'm not against like the 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 raising of the the big commercial events. And it's just a little friendly, see, uh it was how much is it costing us? If they do these, whereas, well, if you simply allotments, there is a cost to us and we lose money on the allotments. Are we covering the costs of these events within? So I'm aware they have to clear up themselves. And what happens if they don't clear up? Then I assume they lose any of the cost. Do we find that they extra expense if we have extra expense?
Um clearly from a finance perspective, um people like the fun fair leave that place in spick and span condition. Uh they provide toilets now, which they didn't used to. Uh they, the their patients would use the public toilets uh and 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 other commercial business facilities. Uh it's impeccable, you know, the uh uh I think when they use Barnham Cross Common for the fireworks, the spaces are left in brilliant shape. So we have no costs. And we only discovered quite recently that the fun fair actually have their own electricity meter. Uh um that they, so so when the fun fair is there, we don't even pay any of the power costs. They actually pay for it themselves, you know, um.
I wouldn't have thought there was much power in places like Malford Common or or um, you know, we had to have our own generator. We had to generate, you know, uh VE, and I'm assuming there's not on Barnham Common.
No, there's not power on Barnham Cross Common, yes.
I obviously keep swearing and that, that's it.
Yeah, that has, we have literally points there. But I mean, that's going to be used by, hopefully by our market one of these days, um.
Yeah, could, I mean, I I would say if they're going to use power, then that's obviously going to be the extra cost to us. And then we quite legitimately say, you know, you could put that on top, but um I won't go too mad on the price if it if it's not easy for them to, you know. Give my opinion again.
Counselor Land.
Can I make a proposal?
Yes.
That we do the same as we did with the allotments and we raise it five percent every year and unless it's something different, Counselor.
Um yes, uh anybody want to go?
I I I'd be with that. That makes sense. It's um it's linked to something else we're doing. Um there is a cost, of course, because we're paying for the maintenance of the ground in the first place, thirty grand over this period, so.
But there is a cost, the the charity has to go and.
It it would be the right, yeah, it's like make sure it's ready, make sure it's it's fine when it's finished. And there is a cost, which is, yeah, makes sense to me.
Okay, so uh we've had a proposer, a proposal from Counselor Land, who have seconded, it's McDonald, all in favour? Yeah, great.
And then we'll bring the policy back. So it's just going to be on the price increase, not confirm that, brilliant.
Okay.
I might get a P forty five, they were in the top box stack, because I've missed a period report.
The bar.
Or don't before.
All right, and then the final item is the financial report for uh the four months ending, that's what we're going. Have you got this right?
None. I actually haven't.
Still reporting.
Yeah.
The 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 financial reports are correct, but the narration, uh uh there was something, I just was saving so many copies of this report that I was drafting it last week. And the wrong, it it hasn't saved the right copy. So I put the right copy now on the screen here. Uh the only part that was left up was the income part. There was a mix up between the the narration on the income and the narration on the expenditure. Uh so the income part wasn't in your pack that you got. It just shows, if you have a look at the income here, uh our income generally, uh we had budgeted uh income of twenty five four five four, which you'll see in that that figure, that column there, we received twenty five six eight. The main reason for that is around uh our agri and bloom. We have got a lot of sponsorships for the uh uh for the planters that we have in the town. Uh some of them, they've actually paid for the planters. We've incurred the cost, but we haven't built it. And I was very pleased today because the the finance officer came back from leave and all she got today was just instructions. Please, can you raise the invoice for this? Can you raise the invoice for that? And that should eradicate the 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 deficit in there. The only other deficit is around the cemetery income and that's down. And I mean, this explanation can only be as simple as there's not that much activity relative to 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 uh previous years. We, you know, we just average out what happens on the cemetery. And at the moment, barriers and that are a lot lower than they, than the, you know, than the averages. So that's why that income is down. We also think people are going more crem- uh uh cremations and there's less money around memorials. Where typically if someone was buried, there'd be a lot of money spent on memorials. That seems to have uh reduced uh a little bit. On the expenditure side, uh the report did actually have some explanations there, even though they were under the wrong headings. Uh um and it's really, we've got, what we've got is quite significant underspend on our community environmental services salaries. We budgeted for staff members uh to start uh from the beginning of the year. We've 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 had a little bit of a saving there. Bear in mind, though, that you have to offset that saving because we spent more money on contract personnel in terms of seconding people in because we lost two key members of our team at the beginning of the financial year, once both through accidents. Uh so 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 there's saving on our salaries budget. Positions have been filled, so that will not continue. There is a saving on what we budgeted on our vegetation management contract. So that's sitting at five thousand seven hundred and sixty seven for the first uh um um four months. So hopefully that will continue because we get built consistently. They take the contract about divided by twelve, and that's what they put us every every month. Other open space management, there's a little bit of expenditure there. Uh uh tree surveying, we have a little bit under, but I don't think that that's going to to be there. You have to look at the tree budget in totality. And if you look at the actual detailed financial reports, you'll see that there. And our toilet enhancements, we'd expect it to spend money on our toilets, uh because they're subject to vandalism and particularly the bus station ones. We tend to spend a lot of money on that. So overall, that is where the underspenders and then the overspend. Our open space emergency maintenance, this is where the traveller uh excursions are being costed out. So this year we've had more than we've had in previous years. Uh uh so we have to keep weighing up that cost uh versus um um kind of making the the areas more uh sound. We discussed that in under the next report. Tree cutting maintenance is a little bit higher. Again, this is seasonable, you know, you have to look at it totality. When you look at it in rural quarters, it doesn't make too much sense. And this, the toilet staff contract cover, we've got a big saving in our savings and wages, but we've got a big spend because we had to fill positions. We now think that we've got the staff compliments and we've got one more arrangement which will fund uh a a con- a another staff member to do our toilets on the weekend and to provide cover. Uh the lady that's working for contract personnel now, uh they've been, she's she's interested in working for us and contract personnel will not give us a a placement fee or recruitment fee. So that's 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 quite nice. But overall, uh uh we're a little bit relieved. When I prepare these reports, I sweat pours down my forehead because this is a big, big budget, big part of our budget, very small income, significant amount of expenditure. So I was relieved for the four months ending thirty first of July that we're in a positive financial footing.
Very good. Thank you very much. Any questions?
I think it's an indulgence, really. Um I did put a question earlier on for Nick about uh tree removal on Malford Common. I know there's something going on. And that's just reminded me, I didn't ask it at the right point. Are we replacing the trees with cotton?
Absolutely. Yes, how will you replace our trees going forward? Yeah, absolutely.
I know it's difficult because they're so big and they've got some few roots, but that that tree-lined avenue sort of gets lost. You know, that's, that'd be a shame, but um just a reminder aside, Alan.
Thank you. Um. Very good. So the the only income budget, the um the corporate support for Fethwood and Bloom, can I bring in about ten K, is that right?
Something like that, yeah, we we go on.
We down by six five. We budgeted for ten K and we got three nine seven five. So we confident the invoices that went out today were three four. And the other one, I've forgotten what it is, but we'll we'll tally this all out. I mean, it was a very stretched budget, ten thousand five hundred. Because last year, we also got the contract to do the bus station uh planting for Norfolk County Council, which we put into that vote. This year, we haven't managed to get any, too much money out of Norfolk County Council, if any at all.
Thank you. Well, that is great.
It's hard to make a sponsor it.
It's really good to see that our business is supporting that so well. And then in in the expenditure budget, also we have um uh so the the what the cost on um the travellers, those boys.
What are those costs?
We're normally about three and a half, three thousand, three and a half thousand.
For, I mean, is this on on what? Just on staff?
What we, what we have to do is we have to get, the police will only respond if things are done properly. Yeah. Previously, we weren't doing things properly. So now we get the bailiffs to actually serve the notices. They serve the notices. Uh the bailiff will then come uh on the due date to check whether the 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 date that we've given them uh has uh whether they've moved on. Um if they haven't, the tra- uh the the bailiff will then organise transport, uh so they'll get the big pickup trucks. Um and then they'll forcibly actually move them on. To give you an example of the last. To give you an example, the lawsuits that came in on BJ Day, if you remember then, we were very lucky there, Nick was on leave, so I had to handle it. I've never ever done anything like that in my life. But we went there, we served notice, they had to be gone by seven o'clock on the Friday. They came on the Friday, they had to be gone by seven o'clock on the Friday night. I met the bailiffs at eight o'clock, we had the police there. And luckily for us, the police were willing to serve a section sixty eight notice, which meant that they would actually be committing a crime if they hadn't vacated by seven o'clock that night. So they offered to leave at seven o'clock that Saturday night. Within an hour, most of the caravans had actually gone because they'd gone to find their new spot. And then they left people here just before seven. And the police said, we're quite willing to bring a huge, you know, bus load of officers in to start the eviction process. That only cost us three and a half thousand, to give you an example. So when we have a bigger intervention, when we had one on Malford Common a few months ago, that was probably five thousand. So it is big money.
Thank you.
Because getting rid of the travellers is a lot more efficient than getting rid, quite than getting rid of one caravan. We've got the right process in place, we're using, we're using the bailiffs correctly.
But they say you have to do.
Yeah, well, they would. If we're saying, this is like perfect, yeah. If we're saying that we, you know, we have to follow our side of the law, basically. And I think we do, congratulations on that. Very much.
I'm chatting with that off.
Thank you. So thank you for the report, we noted. And I think that's the last item on the agenda, shall I? Meeting closed.